All right. I will now open the Estacada City Council, Estacada Fire Board, and Estacada School District for a joint workshop. And we are excited to see all of you here, all the groups together. We've got a lot of stuff going on around our city, and I think that's what we're all here tonight to to find out is what you're up to and and where your direction is and and where you want to be when it's all said and done. So I will throw it out there, anybody can go first. Um, and kind of tell us what you're up to. Anybody want to jump in?
You already used to jump in. If you lost no first ball, we'll go first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Let Ben show us how it's done.
Uh, Ben Wheeler, uh, Vice Chair at School Board. I got Joe Berman, John Walper, and Rochelle Shabira. Rosa should be here, she's on her way. She's on her way. There she is right there.
She is.
Uh, we also have a couple other, uh, school district staff here, Danny Randall and Maggie Kelly along with, uh, Superintendent Carpenter. So we have three, uh, big ticket items that we're going to talk about today, uh, strategic plan, longer age facility planning and the uh, budget that we just approved through our budget committee. So, uh, you want to start off with the strategic plan?
Uh, I can just share a little bit about, um, we, we did one about five years ago and we're in the fifth year of this last strategic plan and it's been very successful. And it feels like it's really set us up, um, over these last few years, um, especially during, you know, some tough times in the pandemic and things like that. But I feel like that has really been a guiding principle for us in a, as a district to stay the course and continue to, you know, strive for excellence in the district. Um, we've had record graduation rates and we, um, our ninth grade on track numbers are improving. So if we feel very, um, happy with the progress we're making, but we always want more. Uh, we've also, um, been identified as a top workplace for the last four years, which is, you know, pretty high honors, especially with the school district, um, in Oregon, and we have a very high employee retention rate of over ninety percent, ninety-two percent. So that's pretty exciting. Again, it feels like it shows, you know, that we're on, on the right track. Um, and we want to build upon that. And so we are working on a new strategic plan, um, for the next five years. I don't think it's like we're going to throw this one away. We're just going to continue to evolve and, and make it better to what we are, you know, where we are today and where we want to go. Um, and then also we've been, um, surveying. So we surveyed about a thousand people to get some input into the next strategic plan and the direction. And it looks like we're going to have a party. I don't know about this, but June twenty-first from five to seven P M. At the high school to, uh, celebrate the strategic plan. So I better put that on my calendar. That's kind of what we're at for our strategic planning process.
Nice, nice. Well, you guys have done great things, you know, it's been a long time. But, uh, watching the school district come to this point, uh, the bragging rights are there. Everywhere I go, I, I talk about the school district, what they're doing, how far you guys have come, the grades scores, the things that are happening up there and, and then that new football field. I was a crowning, crowning on the whole thing. But, uh, I just want to tell you, you guys are doing a fabulous job there and, uh, you I can't say anything about it. I mean, I wish people could see what you guys have done and and the school board. I mean, you guys are just, you complement each other.
Well, thank you.
You do a great job and I'm, you know, congrats on getting your seat and, uh, I just, it's awesome.
Well, thanks for that. Uh, we got a couple more here. We're going to hit, um, the, the B word is going to come up, the bond conversation. Uh, we officially call it the long range facility planning, uh, conversation. And in that is an in-depth dive into all of our buildings, all of our grounds down to fencing, doorknobs and everything else. Uh, so the last few months, uh, we hired a firm to come through, uh, it's six months ago or so, uh, and they doing a sound and an analysis on the entire, um, facility. And so with that, they lay out all the things that we need to fix over immediate, five-year, ten-year and, and down the road. Um, it's been a committee up to this point, and now it's getting to the point where the school board has to start weighing in on it and figuring out the, the long-term direction for us as a school district. Uh, we've done some other things to accompany that, and one of which is a population study. Uh, this is fresh off the press in the last couple of days. Um, and this is independent of the, uh, P S U. One that we're all familiar with. And it's a conservative estimate is about four hundred more kids over the next 10 years. Um, currently we're eighteen fifty, nineteen fifty, sorry, I'm a hundred off, um, which is a hundred over last year. Uh, and that's enrollment in the bricks and mortar school district. Uh, when you factor in the, um, charter school, which is affiliated with us, we're up over three thousand. And so four hundred more kids over the next 10 years, that's going to be an impact for everybody, uh, within the walls of the buildings. So us planning that accordingly, uh, is part of this conversation. Um, three of the uh, amounts that have been discussed in these facility planning meetings are just to fix the things that are going wrong or HVAC systems or electrical systems that don't accommodate everybody having a laptop. Um, that's about a forty million dollar bill across the district. Uh, if we throw in a new elementary school, we're up to that sixty million mark. And when we're talking about a new high school, you're up over a hundred million, a hundred and ten million, somewhere in that ballpark. Um, so it's big numbers. Uh, the great thing is, is with the, uh, increased enrollment, uh, that we're projecting and we've already seen, uh, the tax base has grown. And so as this current bond comes off our tax rolls here in the next couple of years, um, our hope is to tag on this next bond, if we go out for one, that it just, it'll just be a seamless transition and we'll continue on and have new facilities to go along with it. So uh, if you're interested in that, we'll have plenty of meetings to go along with it. Um, I think all of us have been educated along the, uh, bond platform over the course of two failed, uh, bond attempts and, uh, hopefully one down the road that will be successful. So uh, the last item here is our, uh, talking about our budget for this year is upcoming here. Joe, you want to take that or Rosa?
Yeah, I can read the bullets.
Yeah.
Thanks. So, uh, on, on budget, we just got our budget passed. I think this is the first time we've had a full budget committee. Uh, volunteers in many, many years, so we appreciated that. Uh, so with our past budget, we've also included, uh, three percent COLA for teachers, cost of living raise and a two percent COLA for administrators. Um, the district's currently negotiating contracts with classified staff. Um, we expect those to go well. Uh, we're also planning to end with a twelve percent end fund balance, which for us in the school district is a pretty healthy end balance. So we're also proud of that. Um, one of the, the things we, we hear a lot about is financial transparency and people want more, or you get survey results that say we're not, you know, spending the taxpayers money wisely, but it's just good to remind that we've had, um, zero audit findings for the last five years running straight. So hats off to all the folks in the district, um, taking good care of our taxpayer dollars. Um, and, and to add to that, we just won a national award for finance. Uh, Ryan, do you have any more details on that, where it came from?
Yeah, sure. So it's the National School Business Officers, uh, Award and, uh, only fifty in the entire United States are provided to school districts and we were one of fifty in the entire country. Uh, so this twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year's budget was a national award winning in terms of transparency, uh, fidelity and, uh, just our ability to do a great job of communicating. So in a community where we have historically, you know, money is always questioned. Uh, we're very proud to share with the community that we've been great stewards of taxpayer funds and it's now, uh, being recognized at a national level.
So that's the end of the financial report, but as a board, we will continue to stay a hundred percent transparent on financial matters and keep those zero findings coming.
Well, we can all appreciate that. You're doing a great job. All right. Anything else on the school board? Any questions for the school board?
Yeah, uh, something came up in our, uh, T S P or traffic traffic system plan, yeah, last night. Um, there's a concern with the buses on the street on six. Uh, I haven't experienced it because I'm not usually in Estacada at that time, but I didn't, I was today. Um, driving through there, it's a little, it's really tight. Um, is there any plan in place to get the, um, the buses off the street? Um, can anything be, be done in the, the big green space up front to maybe make a second drive for buses? Is there anything in the works for that?
Sure.
Uh, yes, is the answer to that question. In fact, I spoke with Counselor Littkey about it. Uh, I want to say maybe a month or two ago. And, uh, we are looking at different ways to stage our buses. Um, one of the reasons why we positioned ourselves there this year over last year is we were hesitant about middle schoolers crossing the crosswalk because we used to line up in front of the high school and we've had one kid get hit, uh, inside that crosswalk from a car. And so we really kind of wanted to create a natural slow spot and hinge point, uh, where we could have personnel out there and we could load the buses both on the middle school side and the high school side. But similar to you, we've heard, uh, uh, helpful feedback, uh, from our community and the inconvenience that that creates for, uh, our community. And so, uh, actually Commissioner Littkey had a, had a decent alternative suggestion that we're looking into implementing. We, we likely won't do anything as we have four weeks left, uh, and we've got a decent routine. We're just going to stick with it. Uh, but we are going to take this off-season in school to find a more efficient, yet extremely safe, uh, way to make sure we're loading these kids on buses. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to share something with you also. Shortly after, uh, we redid the sidewalks up there, um, I was coming down from Cemetery Road in front of the high school and I noticed there was like four or five vehicles in front of me. And there were two buses that wanted to turn right and head up the hill. And they couldn't make the turn because of that extension that's out there now. So I stopped just past the, the the site, uh, the crosswalk and, uh, to allow them to make their turn. I was getting horns blown at me for not moving and you I, I think personally I've heard a lot of complaints about that. People can't make turns with big trucks. They can't make turns with buses.
Yeah, that's also something that we're, that we, we've been discussing with the traffic, traffic system plan. So.
Yeah, so we, we talked, we're trying to find a solution where kids can still cross safely there, but yet it's wider. So I think that's one of the things we just tasked him with last night to, to start looking into how we can do that. But the other thing we also tasked him what to try and figure out is what's the, our traffic and public safety committee has also brought up multiple times is the crosswalk that you're referring to and trying to, um, see what we can do as a city side to really light that thing up, make it bigger, make it more well-known. And he's supposed to come back to us with some ideas on that. So we can try to get that done. So basically kind of working in tandem with moving it over there, but still give the students some, a safe way to cross. So.
Thank you. Jerry.
And along those lines, we were also discussing last night, um, the parking for near the baseball fields and the neighborhoods. So I know there's been talks in the past about, uh, providing further off-street parking. And I know I'd been to a couple of your meetings where you, you discuss that, but I didn't know if anything was definitively in the works or what, again, another thing we were talking with our transportation and public safety. So I just wanted to ask and bring that up.
Thanks, Sherdy. Um, excuse me. Yeah, it is a mess, uh, when there's more than one baseball game or softball game or six of them. Um, and that, I, I can raise my hand, uh, as agreeing to that plan. I think it was Denise Carey, Ryan, uh, Ken Rydell, and maybe Melanie were in that meeting. We were discussing before Campanella Estates was Campanella Estates and that Broadway extension and fill in the ditch. And it was all part of the same conversation and they flashed some pretty maps in front of us that showed us the road alignment. So we said, well, that's the one. And it clearly, it's not doing the right thing there. So it's a hindrance for our buses getting in and out of the bus garage. It's a hindrance for anybody that goes and through to Campanella Estates. Um, as a school district, we've talked about that. Uh, it's going to be a road that runs from bus garage, uh, east towards Cemetery Road, uh, where the old ditch was. Um, we got some preliminary numbers last summer and it was upwards of a million dollars to punch that in. And so we're trying to pare that back, um, as we talk about budgeting and capital improvements and all those things. Um, the perception of putting a road in versus putting HVAC in is always one of those things that, uh, is concerning. So we're trying to do it on a tight budget and it's, it's on the back of our minds. There's a group of us that, uh, talk about it pretty regularly and of course, letting it dry out enough to where we can get machinery in there and do, um, productive work is the other part of it. So I, I know that there's another few community members that want to help out on that. So Ryan, I don't know if you have anything to add. Um, it, it's, it's a conversation that's being had. We know, we definitely recognize the problem. So.
Melanie, is that something that we can maybe collaborate with our, um, with the T S P or?
Actually, I was just talking with Don today with Public Works, uh, because we had talked about whether we needed to paint like that, that stretch through there is twenty-eight feet, which is that skinny street that we were looking at last night. And so technically there should only be parking on one side. Um, and so Don's going to have Public Works and he's worked with the school district folks there also to make sure that
I'm not the only ones.
That, so if we can limit it to parking on one side in that narrow section of the street, I think that will be helpful. And then an idea that we've had and kind of, um, I've talked about with Mike is potentially, Mike, where, um, when we're putting in Hillway, maybe doing that as a partnership. And if it's part of a larger project rather than just a standalone road with a parking lot, maybe that would see some cost savings.
He actually took the, I, where's my mouth? I was going to say, Hillway. That'd be something that we can break off of there to help with that as well. So.
We tack it on. It might be.
Hillway is going to kind of follow the, the, the river up a little bit. So it won't be straight across, but might be.
It wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't connect actually to the parking lot, but the two projects might be able to coincide and but we're not, I don't know, um, how that, how that bid's going to come in yet for Hillways. Thank you.
And is everyone aware what the Hillway extension is? Carrying, carrying down from Cemetery Road essentially connecting over to Campanella. And that's going to help ease some of the, uh,
The pressure up in the air.
Yeah, pressure in front of the school as well, too.
One thing that could immediately alleviate too, and it's just, uh, as we seek this out, we may need help from the city council is right now, you know, it would be affordable for us to gravel the, the, the blueprint of where we want to put, you know, sixty to eighty parking stalls on school property, which would immediately alleviate that pinch point. But it's against code, obviously, to create that without asphalt and pavement and drainage and that kind of a thing. And so we have been creatively seeking how we might be able to work with you to temporarily, you know, gravel it as we build a restroom and concession stand, something of that nature. Maybe it's a construction access or something like that, which would allow the affordability of us to do some of the work without going through the full pavement structure of that, which is where it becomes a million dollars.
Yeah, I like that idea. I think we can sit at the table and figure that one out.
I've seen some parking where they use recycled asphalt. So you don't have the issues with the dust and the dirt being trailed back out onto the streets. And if you, uh, roll it on a hot day, it, it does pretty well. It's sticking together and not bleeding over into grass. Might be a nice alternative for, for gravel. And if you get a hold of somebody that's chewing up a highway or something, at times you can get large amounts of it in certain times at a very low cost. So.
Um, since, since we're still talking about this, uh, kind of roughly that area too, we brought up, um, the, where Broadway kind of comes up and kind of spins around and goes right there by the parking lot too. Um, I'll talk, talk to the, uh, tell on the consultant we had here that that road sometimes can be confusing of where the actual road is. I mean, my first time in here, I, I used to drive up to the parking lot thinking that was the road at first. And so I think we're going to try to do something with some painting there or something, or put something up and to kind of clarify.
A river mill.
Strip it or something.
You know, so it kind of gets something better. So if you guys have any ideas what that might work there as well, without being a hindrance to your parking lot, be good to know. So.
What was the biggest takeaway from the two bonds that didn't make it through before? Has there been, I imagine there's been discussions on going forward with the new bond. I'm excited to see a bond pass. What was the, the downfall to the two previous, um, bonds, you think?
You're giving that to me? Well, I do have one, one thing that I think was detrimental was the one year was the same year the fire was going out to, you know, become Estacada Fire District. And one was a no vote and one was a yes vote. And I feel like that actually was very conflicting and confusing and challenging for our community at that specific one. I think that was the first one that, that failed and we were super close on that one.
I think that was the second, that was twenty.
Oh, that's the second one?
Yeah, twenty sixteen.
Oh, I wasn't prepared to twenty sixteen.
Uh, that, that was the first one we went out for and it, um, we missed it by two hundred and thirty-seven votes, if anybody wants to know. Um, uh, it was, I, I think we had a good community push, but we didn't have the, I'm not saying that we didn't have the school district backing, but we didn't have the Maggie and Dannys that are beating the drum on the communication daily or weekly or however often. Um, and so we had one component of it really well and not the other part. Um, also, we kind of had mixed buy-in. I think the staff was split, it seemed like. Um, and then the it was a previous superintendent too. And so there was, there was a lot of dynamic involved with that. Um, I'm trying to think, it was fifty-five point one million dollars and it would have pretty much gutted the high school. So twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-three, seven years, and now you're talking almost twice as much money to achieve the same thing. So that's the hard part, the tough part to swallow.
Twenty twenty, uh, replacement bond?
Twenty twenty, you guys remember the dollar figure on that one?
It was a dollar per thousand, which I believe you've got us a little over fifty.
So one thing that, one thing that I remember around that time, people talking about is, uh, um, the people that were talking negatively about it. Um, and I don't know the facts behind it, but, but, um, there's information out there saying that we're asking for another bond and we still don't have the previous bond paid off. So that's one thing that, you know, that one conversation, you know, one piece of conversation that people were having and, and I didn't know, I, I didn't know enough about it at the time to say anything. And I still real, honestly don't know, um, much about that to give information. So.
And it's factual. I mean, we still have a bond that runs, runs until twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. It was a twenty-five year bond that was, uh, approved in tw- two thousand and one. So it definitely still exists. Um, it's much like a mortgage on a house that if you have your mortgage and then you go remodel your kitchen and take out a loan for it, you're going to have a second mortgage.
Yeah.
Um, so it, it's hard to combat that, but that bond bought us a Clockmouth River Elementary, a new annex for, uh, Eagle Creek Gym, uh, River Mill Gym, did some upgrades to the, uh, junior high. And so it, it was money well spent.
Yeah.
We, we heard the same thing and we heard that, you know, the school district didn't manage that money well and, um, a lot of things went awry with that bond. I, I still don't know all those things. Um, I just graduated from high school at that time. So I'm sorry. But, uh, anyway, so it, it, it's a lot of misinformation and the problem with any of this, uh, bond related stuff is the people that come out to vote for it are four out of four voters, the, the big elections, they come out to vote. Um, and they read the three hundred and twenty-five words in the voter's pamphlet and they say yes or no off of that. And so it's hard to have these conversations in those three hundred and twenty-five words.
Right.
Uh, which is why the community, uh, outreach is important.
Yeah, that's one thing, one thing, you know, leading up to the bond, you know, leading up to the vote, just, um, you know, make sure that the information about that, that this bond is coming, the previous bond is coming to a close. You know, it sunsets in the next couple of years. So just make sure that information's out there and it might, it, the, these aren't my concerns because I voted yes both times. Um, but, uh, um, it just, it get that, if you guys could get that information out there, which I, I know you will, um, it might combat some of that, you know, negative negativity towards the bond.
Yeah. One of the things I heard a, a lot during that time too, which it won't be an issue now because you've got done was the field. It was why was the field tacked on when there's so many other things important and it raised the, the price of the bond up a lot more. But now that the field's been redone anyways, you want to put that on there. So I think that's something you, I heard all you want to jump over. But that's something I heard a lot about as well. So.
Hey, new field, state champions. That's all I got.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to have a problem this time only because you have a lot of new people in the area. And we're dealing with a whole different generation, a whole different concept of what's important. They're coming in here with their kids and they need a school that is up to date and ready. And you've got it and they know it. So I'm, have a feeling that that bond is going to go pretty far with that.
Is, is A C included in the bond this time?
A lot of different levels of potential bond and they have different things.
I, I think there's even a reward at one, some point how to, how to use two hundred thousand dollars to cool the school or something. Did you ever get anything out of that there, Ryan?
No. The, the dollars and cents part of it, it's kind of interesting. The, the bond that was passed in two thousand and one was, uh, you have to state the tax burden per thousand dollars and it was stated two dollars and two cents per thousand dollars of assessed value of your house. And that was in the voter's pamphlet. Current day, I believe it's, is it one forty-two or one thirty-two?
For the current bond right now, one seventeen.
One seventeen. So from, over the course of twenty-five years, that tax burden has actually gone down. Large part because of everything going on in the industrial area and all the additional tax load that's on the new houses. And so um, that's the, the other part we got to try to convey to people is that, yes, it's a lot of money, but if we keep growing like we are, that will continually go down if everything plays out right. So it's a big conversation.
It is a big conversation. But you guys have been doing all the right things. You're getting that sixty-minute, I read all the time, everything that's going on around the school. It's positive. So I, I see a, a great campaign. And I think us as counselors can help out with this too, when that bond comes to play. Cause we're all on board with it and I think we need to push it just as much as you do. Because it's important to our children. So we appreciate that. All right. Anything else?
I think that's enough about us.
Uh, I'd be curious, um, if you have any population studies that maybe you could talk about during your time. So we've got this one data point. I'm curious if you guys have gotten any recent research down on that.
I think we've talked about it. Melanie, did we have anything in numbers there?
I should have a planning staff here, but, um, so what we're looking at is over the next, if I remember the numbers right, over the next twenty years growing to about eight thousand, but the way we were growing, it could happen, you know, if it continued, we could have that boom right at the beginning of it, or it could drag out over the next twenty years. Um, it was kind of looking like it's going to happen really fast. Um, and the P S U does population forecasts and for inside the urban growth boundary, which is every piece of property that could annex in Estacada. I think their estimate was about eighty-five hundred people. Um, that would, that could increase if there's more multifamily uh, units that come in and, and things like that. So it's a little uncertain, but, um, right now we're at about fifty-three hundred, just inside city limits. So it'd be significant growth, but not, uh,
I, I think those are the P S U numbers right there. Yeah, which you guys have those correct. So yeah, it's, but I, I know that, didn't we, didn't we like blow each, like last three years, four years, we blew the, uh, P S U numbers out of the water by almost double. So.
Yeah, I would take the P S U numbers with a grain of salt.
Yeah.
It's just, the eight thousand wasn't the P S U numbers, was it?
It was.
Yeah, it was. I thought the eight thousand came from our housing needs consultants.
Which is from the P S U numbers.
Uh, they ran two numbers though. They ran the P S U numbers and they ran their own, but they had to go buy the P S U numbers for the housing needs analysis.
I think they're relatively close. I could look that up and send out a follow-up message on that. Um, how the P S U numbers compared with the, our consultant's own analysis of that. Um, I think the key is for us as a city, how quickly that happens and can we manage it? If it happens over twenty years, we, that we can manage that if it happens in the next five years, it's a push, I think for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm going to start off with the council unless the fire board wants to go next.
Just got one statement. So every city that I've seen that gets a new school, population growth goes exponentially higher than what numbers are. So if you guys get a new school, I think that we're going to be in for a growth spurt. Cause you know, everybody wants their kids to go to a new school. So that's all I got to say about that.
Well, that's, that's understandable, but I think if you look around at the growth we're seeing right now, I, I think it's happening whether we like it or not. So the school is just a, an added bonus to accommodate at this point. And we, we need to be updated. We need to be on the same track, I feel with our students. So.
But let's just not go the way of, uh, Sandy and build a school so big that we don't use most of it.
Not a college campus, a school.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm going to let one of my counselors just, uh, jump in and tell of some of what we're up to in the city at this point. So Jerry, I'll, I'll hand it over to our height new one and just pick one thing.
Um, well, again, um, last night we had our, uh, another traffic system plan meeting with the, um, with the group and there's a lot of prod, there's a lot of projects on, on the list. And, uh, we're really trying, we're really pushing to get people to fill out the survey, um, so we can prioritize what, you know, what projects mean the most to the, to the community. So, um, I mean, that's a big, that's a big thing coming up with, you know, over the next few years is uh, all these little projects to make, you know, um, between motorized vehicles, pedestrian walking, biking, um, you know, wheelchair access, you know, all, all of that stuff where there's a lot, there's a lot of projects in play, you know, that are on the list. There's a lot of projects in play, you know, that are on the list and we're just trying to get people to uh fill out that survey so we can. You know, prioritize that to what the community actually wants. Um, you know, all the projects, all the projects are gonna stay on the list. So if, you know, if something doesn't get, if people don't. Say that they want this project, but we still feel it, it needs to be done, it's gonna stay on the list, it's just gonna move down. But we're just trying to get those, you know, those high priority um. Projects moved up, you know, of what the community feels. Um, so yeah, we're just trying to push to get the survey filled out. Um, and then, you know, which will help us figure out, you know, which projects are, you know, important to the community.
I think you wouldn't have anything.
Um, we are looking at camping ordinance. Um, there's a new uh. Law out that says that we need to keep. We cannot. Let. We can't shove people out. We have to have somewhere for them to go. So we're trying to figure out. That portion where we're gonna send people. If they're um like i- on any city property, if they're hanging out here, we gotta say you have to uh, you can't stay here, but here's where you can go. So it's very complicated and we're trying to figure that out. And so that just started for us.
Are you talking about rental property?
No.
No.
Randy?
No.
You wanna shove them out or?
Unhoused, you know.
There, there's a, there's a uh Supreme Court decision uh, of the Ninth Circuit Court um, for Grants Pass versus Johnson. That uh basically said uh, they put some things out there which basically built on Boise versus Baker, which um has built on. I think Baker versus State here in Oregon. So then I, I figured the name exactly for Boise part, but. All that coming down to is, is the, there's a few things that we, we have to do as one is we have to have a place in the city to. To, if we want to make camping laws, so you can't camp in front of the city, something like that. The uh. Case has basically said that we have to replace within our city limits for us to send them. We can't use outside resources as they. As they fall back, it has to be within our own city limits and where we can provide them a place to go. Um, so kind of what and how and all that is, there's a lot of questions around it and things we're trying to figure out. To what extent we're held to that and to uh how we can, we can adjust that because we don't have the law enforcement to, to really. Enforce people leaving and not being there um, to make sure that it's clean. That's a big burden on, on uh city staff for them to have to go and. Clean up the mess every single day if there's mess left there. And um, who's gonna enforce them leaving the city, uh, the, the properties where we have them closed at to send them there. Um, there's certain hours that we, we have to enforce for them to be, uh, to be there is, it's. Honestly a mess. So um, the Grants Pass is taking it to a, the uh full spring quarter on the federal level, not just the. The United District. Um, and they're doing it through the Court of Appeals. And so assuming that they grant that appeal. Then there might be some changes coming down from that, but until then. This is kind of what all the cities under, under the Ninth Circuit Court are being bound by. Um, is that, but the thing is, we don't know exactly too what. That particularly applies to versus what the Boise versus Baker applies to, versus what our own state laws apply to because. Some apply each one and it's not a real clear picture. And so it's a honestly a mess to try to navigate through. So.
And it's not a, it's not a huge problem in Estacada at this point, you know, with uh people sleeping on public property. Um, but we have to get ahead of it. We have to, you know, i- if, if we want to be able to enforce the, you know. You can't, you can't sleep here. We, again, like they said, we have to supply that, we have to have a place where they can go. Um, and you know, we're, we've been talking and those baseball field dugouts are real nice. Just joking, just joking. No, I think the, the, the place right now that we have in mind might be the, the portal. That might be our only option. You know, we, we're gonna continue to discuss that though.
Thank you. Sure.
Um, well, many of you probably know that we are, we need to move our wastewater treatment plant. So that is. That's huge. That's something we've uh, this council's been working on for. Over two years, going into three years and um, it is quite the process. I know Councilor Licky, this was kind of his baby when he first came on. And um, I can let him speak more to that. Um, so I think I will let him speak more to that, but I, I wanna let you guys know that we have two newer. Committees that you may not be familiar with. So we have the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, which was formed um. Twenty twenty one, and then we now just this year started the Transportation and Public Safety Committee. So we have two new committees and um, they've been offering us a lot of feedback and insight to what the community needs, how to keep our community safe. Um, so yeah, then I'm sure Joel can speak all day on wastewater.
Yeah, um, so the wastewater uh treatment plant, as we all know, is a key piece of infrastructure that's been uh probably on the top of most of our list. For the growth because um, when I first came in, I was told over and over again, oh, we're good, we're good, we're good. And I, I challenged that a lot and come to find out, well, maybe we're not so good because of numbers are trying to show otherwise. So. Um, since then, we've gotten a piece of equipment that's gave us like a solid issue um, that comes out of theirs. Extended that out, but the reality is it's a forty year old plant that we need a, we need a new one. Um, the challenge without going to anything that's in the kind of the. The closed meeting part of the things is, yeah, I can't really get to those parts, but the challenge has been um, where to put it. Where we're gonna have the least amount of uh impact to the, the people of Estacada, to our tourism. And to whoever's gonna be near it. So that's, you know, who wants to live next to a sewer plant. Um, so that's been part of the problem. The second part has been, it's expensive, very expensive. Um, our initial uh. Our, our initial uh estimates were twenty five million to get that done. And there's a chance without going into details yet, it could be much higher than that. Um, so. Uh, the point is that we're trying to build something that when it goes there, we can expand out. And we don't have to get new relocated again or anything. That it's simply just adding more pools. We're gonna use the latest technology. It's called membrane. Am I right? Yeah, membrane, it's a, you can actually reuse the water off on a membrane technology to actually like. Water, um, if it's Linux would like to say the, I don't know, a farmer's field or something. They could potentially purchase the water to fertilize their fields. Um, it's much better putting it back into our, into our stream. So it's not as. As impactful when it, what comes out in the test there. Um, but it's. A massive, massive thing to try to undertake because you gotta find location, you gotta find the money. You got to uh figure out, you know, get it in the timeline. You gotta deal with, you know, the one old one is running, running out of time for itself. Um, if, there's a lot of balance there. So uh, I'm hopeless to get it done in the next two, two and a half years from now, right, Melanie? Three. Um, and there's a question if we're, if we're gonna meet that. Um, so. Um, I'm trying to figure out what I can and can't say without, without ta- talking about the.
I think we're up against the clock because we have such rapid growth, but yet our wa- our wastewater treatment plant is nearing capacity. So that's where the big push and the big hurry is for us. So.
Have you guys had a tour of our current wastewater treatment plant? You guys have, somebody?
Oh, you should go.
I, I, I definitely know uh, that they, they'll be happy to arrange one with you. You just gotta speak to, to Don and he can get you guys out there. Um, there's certain places you don't wanna go because you won't eat chocolate pudding again. I've eaten it since then, but uh. It's, it's definitely an experience to see what we're, what we have there and how what forty year old technology is with only minimal upgrades. So. To what, what is gonna be coming is be much better. Um, but yeah, it's a key thing because we can't keep growing at the rate we are. Um, we actually, to the point, we have a uh, an agreement with DEQ. Because we're kind of already peeking over what the loud limits are. And so because we're, we, because we're in the middle of a project. They're waiving some of the fines we'd be getting normally on the city till we get that done. And so we also got to stay on track for it because of that. So Melanie, did I miss anything without touch, touching anything?
I think that's great. It's, it is a complicated project. It has a lot of moving parts right now. And as soon as we get the last couple of those nailed down, then we'll be able to. Uh, do more of a presentation to the community. Um, it is very expensive. And so we're seeking funding um, at state level, at federal level. Um, DEQ is able to. Fund a loan, but they don't have much of a forgivable portion of that. And we keep hearing about. All this infrastructure money that's out there that's available, but it's hiding somewhere.
Like a chupacabra.
Yeah, so but we'll see.
Where?
What can come from the state. Um, yeah, and so it is, it's moving ahead. It's been um. It's been a struggle to keep it pushing forward when you don't exactly know where you're going. But by the end of the summer, we will, we'll have things much more defined. And our consultant engineer firm will have a pre-design report and that's when um, it'll be, I think, we'll have, we'll be full steam ahead after that. So.
Yeah, just a comment. One big takeaway I had from that, from the, the last meeting was uh, um, the plant manager said that the water coming out of our. Coming, currently coming out of our plants is cleaner than the water that's already flowing down the river. So the water that we're putting out there right now is cleaner than what, cleaner than what's already coming up, coming through down the river. So.
Current.
Current.
Yes.
Well, it's a capacity. Times you're talking about.
Yeah.
And how many flow storms we have at the.
Exactly. You get high, there's wet flow and dry flow. You get, you get the high flow, which is the wet flow, which is kind of winter time.
It's the ammonia content.
We've learned a lot.
Going. Uh, good, good. I think um, all are on track that we've talked about. Um, I mean, a lot of it's, uh, I can't talk about all the stuff that's going on because we've had a lot of meetings lately and executive session talking about location. Being a factor and other stuff, but so far. We're on track with everything that I know about. Melanie, there's, there's something that I missed.
Yeah, we'll do, we're budgeted for some more I and I projects because I and I is influent infiltration. So that's the groundwater. That you would, you think the biggest worry in a sewer pipe would be anything leaking out, but what actually happens is groundwater leaks in. And that, and then we're treating all of this groundwater through the sewer plant. And that's really where you put in a few more houses and it's a minimal amount of water that they're gonna use and, and put through our system. Uh, but the, the pipes absorbing the groundwater is where we really get our high flows during the high. Water events and stuff. And so last summer, um, this was last summer, everything's blurring together uh, right now, moving quickly, but. We redid the, relined the pipes that go all the way across the old mill property and then did a bunch of work down um, along the highway. Putting new manhole covers and slip lining and such. So that should help keep a good quantity of water out. Um, but it's a, that's where we can really make a dent and extend the life of the plant that we have. Um, by doing those jobs. So good question, Ben.
And not to mention our main street that we're about to take on. A lot of those pipes are old. And decrepit and those will all be replaced during that construction. So, um, Paul?
Yeah, that's a good lead in. I was gonna talk about Main Street that uh, starting in July.
One thing on the I and I.
Yeah.
So we did, we did budget a pretty healthy amount for I and I projects for this year. So we have a pretty healthy budget for I and I.
Um, you know, I don't know.
Ask Chris for those numbers. We should be, now that we're starting to dry out, we should be able to.
We should be able to tell if it's made a difference. That's right. That's right. Yep. Well, he's been paying attention.
Sorry, Paul.
Paul, good.
Thanks. Uh, July, we start ripping up uh, Main Street here. So running from basically the highway more or less up to. Was it second?
Yeah.
Third.
Yeah, basically.
Third up there, uh, at three hundred Maine, uh, ripping that up, basically doing a street improvement like, like what was done on Broadway. Uh, basically repaving, fixing the sidewalks where they need to be, utilities underground. Um. But those are the main things. The street will be wider than what we have on Broadway, taken into consideration that this is a big. Flow for trucks and buses to get through and fire trucks to get through. Um, and then. No bump outs as well too. And then I think a biggie that I know uh, when, when I've talked with people about this. People seem very positive is putting a four way stop in um, at the Yow Treats Corner, basically. Uh, to help us slow people down and um. Control traffic as it comes through here, but improving that, the crosswalks there and then improving the crosswalks at three hundred Maine as well. Crosswalk improvements at three hundred Maine.
Lighting and crosswalking.
Lighting, yes.
Any questions to that if we're moving on?
How long was that planned to take?
Oh, I'd say optimistically, what do we think in three or four months?
What, what day was it planned to start? Do we have a start date yet?
We don't have a start date yet. Um, but it needs, yeah, I need to narrow that down with Kurt because it'll be going out to bid. And we'll bring the contract back to you and get a start date at that point. So we're, we're planning for mid-July because if we wait too long. It'll push us to next year because we'll miss our paving season. And so we're really pushing to get it going.
After the parade though.
After the.
Downtown Estacada Commission was really pushing to, for us to start after the fourth so that they, it didn't have to reroute the parade.
Well, they didn't want to walk on gravel or something.
Yeah.
Um, actually, since we're talking, I mean, I wanna ask a question to the fire department. One thing that came up during the traffic uh, meeting last night was. Um, potentially trying to look at rerouting. Dealing with basically the issues with pulling off the highway onto Maine and a lot of problems. So one of the things you're talking about, which I know has been shut down a lot and I, I agree with it, is trying to route it through Jeremy. Loveless and back on there, which would put it right in front of where the fire department pulls out. So I know that's already an issue.
We're gonna talk about that a little bit.
Save that for you.
Okay. Well, yeah, my question was if you guys are building a new building is if you, for you, what you guys are doing there.
That's what we're gonna talk.
Okay, so all the questions.
We've had multiple new subdivision applications come before us and get approved. And I think that the numbers that are stated for population growth are, are. Overly conservative. I, I think I lost track of the count, but I think we're pretty close to two thousand. Uh, home lots that are approved between, I think it's fourteen or fifteen subdivisions. That um, those developments I believe have a four year window to get the lots platted. How quickly those are built out um, is a variable in that, but with interest rates going up. And uh, property values, buying a house out in Estacada is, is much more economical than other places in the surrounding areas. I think it's gonna become more and more attractive to people that are coming out here and that the schools and the population growth is gonna happen a lot more rapidly. Um, once those start getting built out and, and a couple of those are already underway. And so I think we'll see those numbers kind of get blown out of the water in the next five years. Um, and it'd be closer to that five year window than a ten or a twenty year projection for the populations getting up there personally.
Great, thank you, Mike.
I have a question. Um, I'm, I'm representing District One, which is the um, Eagle Creek area. Um, I feel that we're gonna have a lot of expansion of new vehicles coming into the city. And a lot of people are traveling between Portland, Estacada and back and forth. And I'm. I'm concerned about the traffic on Highway two twenty four and I don't know if that's something that you guys are considering or having conversations with. Federal Highway, ODOT, any expansion? Cause it's just, I live in Eagle Creek and it's just really bad traffic. Um, either early morning or. You know, after work and you know, once there's, there's been several accidents, you know, and just shuts the highway. So. I don't know. That's also a safety concern. So I don't know if there's any.
Yeah, and, and, and I think we can take some turns on this one, but we, we're doing our transportation system plan now. And uh, we've got quite a few people at that table, including ODOT and Clackamas County as well too. And I know that, that one comes up quite a bit, especially. Uh, from an evacuation standpoint, as the city grows, um, how can we address the pinch points in the area? To make sure that runs smoothly. I don't know of anything about expanding the roads that's on the table. But I know uh, Councilor Licky and I were at a, a meeting recently where they talked about um, Am singer putting a roundabout in there. And that'd be the worst job in the world, having that job to talk with rural folks about uh, roundabouts, but it's, it's a reality. That's what's going in there. It's gonna start next spring. It's gonna take about a year and they hinted that there may be another one um, at the jackpot area as well too. Uh, but we've talked some various improvements around here too, that we need to get the, the bridge, you know, the intersection there improved, River Mill as well too. So.
John, I had the same response when they told me about that.
Mike, did you wanna add something?
A lot of the things that we run into when, especially when subdivisions come before us is um, we see traffic impact studies. Where intersections outside of the city's jurisdiction are failing. Um, I believe Hypal Road is one of those, but two eleven. Am Sigger where the fatalities and all the car accidents are happening. Um, we know that those are going on, but they're outside of our jurisdiction. So when um, the intersections are failing. Um, within the city, we're able to address some of those things and request conditions of approval that will help assist in. In eliminating that, but the, the intersections that are out of our jurisdiction, we're relying heavily on. we're relying heavily on either the county or ODOT to deal with, and that's a a slow-moving process.
When I was down in Salem, was it four months ago, something like that?
About that.
Yeah, I I had a chance to speak with uh one of the senators that sits on the committee that basically helps direct ODOT, even though they don't have a direct say in what happens on the projects, they obviously have some influence. Um, and he was telling me one of the things that really gets their attention on that committee is and for ODOT is when there's fatalities involved. And um I mentioned these critical points on on two twenty-four. Um, and is, I I didn't know if it was just timing coincidence or what, but it seemed like a few months later, we had um people out here talking about Am Sigger. I'm feeling that's just more coincidence than anything, but they do know, they do know about it now. He didn't know about the fatalities on the road, so now he does. Um, and so I'm hoping that's getting some eyesight from that side of things on this road. Um, and we'll see what happens from there, but, you know, yes, they're doing a roundabout in Am Sigger. It's a two-lane roundabout, so it's pretty, pretty large, shake up a lot of space. Um, there was a lot of uh a lot of pushback from the community on it. They came out, they didn't ask the community's opinion, they come out and told them what they're doing. And of course, I didn't go too well either for people out there and the, it was a CCP meeting, I think we went to for that. So, um, yeah, and I think it's the county putting it in, but they have to, because it's a highway, they're also permitted through ODOT. Exactly. So ODOT has the final say, the county's paying for it. And it kind of rolls down that way. Anything that's done on this road um and up to ten feet off each side of the road is actually owned by ODOT, has to be approved by ODOT. County has involvement on it, whether it's in our city limits or not. So, for example, over here where the where two eleven and uh two twenty-four meet, that that bridge area there, that is technically ODOT's jurisdiction. Um, when you saw all these changes on the uh on the curves and stuff, that wasn't city, that was ODOT. There was, that was basically doing them. So, um, yes, we can have influence through putting it up there and things, but in the end, it's it's their decision on when and how it happens, so.
That answer your question, Moses?
It does.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Probably I'll reach out afterwards and probably get more engaged and and get some context that though, that you see my residents or my neighborhood could get a little bit more involved.
So that's where the majority of the growth is going, is out toward you.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah. And uh, last but not least, we just got done with our budget cycle. And I can tell you, the city is healthy and wise. We came out really well and we can thank our staff for that. I think they work hard at making sure we do. Um, they did a great job. Uh, Melanie, if you want to go over some of the stats on the budget, as far as you know, anything of interest?
Yeah, just real briefly, um, our budget is larger growing this year than, you know, over last year, last year it was about twenty-two million dollar budget. This year it's twenty-eight million dollar budget, which might sound small to fire or school, I don't know. Um, but we have about twelve million dollars of projects in that uh budget, which is what has bumped it up the to the greatest degree. And one of those is um the Urban Renewal District is going to be paying for the uh Main Street project, but the way that the loan came through the state, it has to go to the city, so the city has to receive the money, pay the contractor, and so that's kind of a wash, but it shows up in the budget. And then Urban Renewal District will make be making the loan payments on that and actually funding it. Um, and then the our engineering, phase one of engineering uh for our uh the new wastewater facility. I think that was budgeted at about three and a half million dollars. Um, that's actually phase one and phase two of the um to get us all the way through design and permitting. And then um we'll have engineering during construction and obviously the construction cost, but for this year, um, we have, we have a lot of good projects going on, Hillway is included in that. And that's all that's coming. Oh, we're going to put a new water reservoir in, that's another thing that's going to be great for growth because we'll have more storage. Uh, we need to, we'll be doing a upgrade or an upgraded plan for our water plant. Uh, because we're okay at this point, but with all these nice green lawns that are going in, um, we use a lot more water than we used to and especially in the summer. In fact, as soon as the kids get out of school, our summer, our water usage, you know, it just goes up. And then as soon as they go back to school, boom, it's down again. So we should probably do some like water conservation education with the kids. Don't leave that hose running. Um, but we'll be putting in another uh high-level water reservoir. And so that's another project that's in there, but um the council has really set some good goals this year. Uh, and so we were able to work off of that and put together a strong budget, so.
Okay, one more last question, Melanie, that you might be able to help us with on a law enforcement.
Yes.
Now, we've upgraded our law enforcement, taking more hours on, we're scheduled to have more coming on. Can you feed a little bit into that and where we're at at this point?
Yes, right now we have um the SRO, that's a partnership with the school district. And he works in the schools during school time, he works on patrol in the city when it, when school's not in session. Um, and we have two other deputies that are in town. And so we have um in addition to the SRO, we have deputies in town seven days a week. We are planning to add, we were, we're the I, the plan was to get another deputy onboard in at the September bump, they bump in uh September and March when they trade their shifts. But right now, acquiring new law enforcement officers is extremely difficult all across the state. Um, and so it looks like it'll be March by the time we get our new deputy, but we are, we're planning, we've planned for adding one in the coming fiscal year, and then we're also requesting one for the following one, so then we'd have um very close to twenty-four hour coverage um with our, with four deputies, either three deputies and a sergeant or four deputies and then the SRO and our chief, so. Uh, we're, we're bumping that up. And that takes the the bulk of um what is, I'll be putting out another uh financial report on how that contract is broken down. But we get, because it's a contract and it's um really it's more regional law enforcement, it it saves us a lot of money versus running, duplicating everything the county is doing to have it here. And so uh but I'll be putting out more information about that, but we are able to keep moving that um level of service up and uh I think it's as long as we can get more people interested in going into that field.
Have we heard anything on the Clackamas County and their issue they're having right now with the Sheriff's Department? I know they uh are talking about cutting their budget and uh they're talking about some other things. Will that affect our officers coming in? Have you heard anything?
I don't believe it will, from what I have heard, but I um I may not have the full story because I know they were meeting with the Board of County Commissioners yesterday and today or not today, it was the last two days. Um, but I had heard that they are cutting positions that they budget for, but those positions were vacant. And so they're not actually reducing any of the the force that they have. But it's like these ones they've been trying to fill and they're not getting them filled, so we're not going to budget for those. That's what I had heard, but I I don't know what the full, how it came out in the last couple of days.
Thank you. And.
Yeah, one quick thing on that. So one of the things that we've talked about with um Brian before was trying to work with maybe getting our law enforcement instead of having um the city halls or break area or something was to try to get them a location in each school where they can go and do do their paperwork and stuff there, putting them in the school and around the school. But also without having to make them SROs, but that would give additional law enforcement around the schools, extra protection there for people that are concerned. But at the same time, you know, not putting additional cost on anyone for that. Um, so I know that uh Ryan seemed positive about that. Um, and I wanted to see what the board felt on that one. Is that something you guys wanted to do? If we wanted to try to move forward with that and if this that the council, I think, was uh on board with that as well, right? Yeah, so um if we wanted to start moving that forward, we can start maybe directing our uh law enforcement to start having the conversations with you. It's actually already in effect, uh the 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 local cities, I can't remember with the the deputy who was on on at the time, but came and did some paperwork at River Mill Elementary School just last week, so.
Absolutely.
We've already met with the supervisor, the the chief or whatever we want to call. Yeah, and uh we've already put that into play, so.
You're happy, you're more up to date than I am.
Yep.
That's great. Good to hear. Uh, we're in a time that is changing vastly and the things I you're hearing every day on the news are pretty scary. And this just makes me feel a little bit less fear when I know that we're going to have officers in the school district, so I appreciate that. But that said, we're all finished with our presentation. Is there anything you'd like to ask us before we move on to the fire department? Oh, all right. You're up.
So I'm Paul Miller, Fire Board Member with Estacada Fire. Um, you know, it's been almost two years since the restart, uh exciting times. Uh, we've purchased three new apparatus, a type three, a type six, and a, and they're here, a tender will be coming in, they're telling us August. Um, we have a subcommittee, we are looking at building a new firehouse. Um, we are going to take it to shovel-ready. We're not going to use the bond word. Um, we're looking at some grants, some self-funding and then possibly a loan. Um, we're looking very far out in the future, you talk to architects and they say that you build a firehouse for a hundred years. Hundred years is a little bit too much for me to accept, but that's the plan. But it's trying to get our heads around what the growth is going to be in this community, so it's great that we're meeting and we're getting some numbers, you know, twenty years, eight thousand people, you know, that's that's data that we need. Um, we're looking at building what we call the Anchor Firehouse. And we're looking at using the current site. Um, we have sixty-one volunteers now. Um, we're short beds to sleep people. We have volunteers that want to pull shifts, we're short beds. Um, we are looking at closing current. Um, we're looking at building a twenty-two thousand square foot fire department with five pull-through bays. Um, you guys are talking about Maine, the question that instantly popped in my mind is when all the plant flower beds and everything went out on two twenty-four, there was a big stink about this intersection not being compliant. So now you guys are going to redo this, is that intersection going to be brought into compliance or where are we at with that?
Well, I think uh the intersection is going to stay the same from what I understand, it's not going to change.
So we will be, you know, we we have paperwork that says that we can take that road back and to do twenty-two thousand square feet, we need it. Uh, me and Tom Benzcoater yesterday got out our tape measures, laid it all out and it's painted in white right across the street there right now. Um, and we can get it to fit. Um, but from the firepoint, fireboard or the fire department side, we have to make sure we have this anchor station. But we don't increase our operating costs so much that it doesn't impede us of building a substation somewhere else. So we're focusing on this anchor station. And then, you know, we're getting a lot more calls up on spring water. Um, and you know, response times, I know that the growth is all going to go to Port Eagle Creek. But you look where the UGB is, I don't think in any of our lifetimes, the UGB is going to change. Um, so this is the spot. We we've got data that says that this is the spot for response times and uh that's what we have to work with. We have to make sure that we maintain our training station. Uh, we have to have our own onsite training. Um, so can't obviously take down the old station and build a new station because we still have to take care of business, so we're left with what's there. Um, that's something that your transportation deal might want to try and get out in front of a little bit is if we do close current down. If you want to walk over there and take a look at the painted lines and everything, um, it's it's sitting there. So, yes, sir.
So, um, I I was actually, one of the things I was hoping to talk to you about was current and um my thought was, if we do change the route, how Maine goes, was giving current over to them to use for pull-through or something.
Good.
So you don't have regular traffic, so that's what my thought was. I mean, I haven't mentioned anyone else, of course, but um the the thing is uh I was, we got to do something about this intersection, we can't put a light there because it's too close to the other one. My question is, uh mainly is, would your new building allow for rerouting the road or will that interfere with uh with pullouts?
So we basically, if you look at, that's Jeremy Lovelace right there, isn't it? Okay. So we obviously have to leave the old station there while we're doing new construction. So basically, from the curb line to the front of the old station is forty feet. And then we have the distance of the old station there. The way ours is laid out in an L, we're going to have to use that area where the old station is for parking. Um, and there is going to be some parking around back, but with five pull-through bays, um, you lose a big chunk of parking there. Um, you know, there's basically eighty feet there, front and back, that you can't have parking from, you know, Jeremy Lovelace to, I don't know what that road is there. So we have to rely on where the office and admin is for parking. So, and then, but the amount of volunteers we have and then also training going on, um.
But when you guys pull out, would you guys still be pulling on the Jeremy Lovelace or is that?
Yes, so we will, like, when we come back from an incident, we will just pull through the back and pull in. And then when we respond, we just run right straight out. There's no more backing trucks in off the road. Um, so it's pull-through base, there's a roll-up door at each end of the building. So the the apparatus bay right now is drawn in at basically eighty foot by eighty foot. Um, and that gives us a lot of parking um for apparatus, um which we have a lot of apparatus.
So, yeah, I'm I'm kind of wondering if we have to reroute our road, if that might be something where we have to look at even possibly changing Jeremy Lovelace in that parking lot or something, because we can't fix the 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 intersection where it's at, we got to move it, but we don't want to impede on deploying apparatuses out of the fire department there, so. Um, that might be something that, wh- when's your building plan time?
We, we don't have an actual building plan, we're, we're still defining everything. And like I said, we got to take everything to shovel-ready, which means, you know, we have to get all the architect involved and get all the drawings done and and go on from there. If we're going to go for grants, we need a dollar amount of what this is going to cost us. So that's why I say we're taking it to shovel-ready, so that we have all the drawings, everything's there. You know, it can go out for uh RFP and then we have a dollar amount so the chief can start looking for grants.
But we probably, you probably will be looking at a new build for at least three to five, right?
What's your thoughts?
Yeah, three to five years is probably pretty accurate. Um, and three years is pretty aggressive. I don't, I don't know if it'll be that quick. Um, the, what Paul's been working on as part of the subcommittee is just add a subcommittee from the board to give this some direction and and start steering this so that we can actually get something on paper, get a plan and be able to move ahead.
So, yeah, it's, um, I'm wondering if it might be prudent or to connect with the um connect our traffic consultants with the fire department to figure out how we can meet what they need there with the new plans coming in and what we can do with the intersection, even if we don't put the light in right away or anything else, which is something that was going to be a very long project, I'm sure. But something where they can try to tile that in, and it might even be something where we title into what they do with two eleven and that whole area and direct it that farther out, allowing them.
I'm sure we're going to have plenty of meetings with staff and the fire department to go over these details. I'm sure there's a lot of details we're going to have to look at. But I I see it as working the way we're, we're talking, so that's not going to be an issue. I think we'll need to sit down and go over all these things uh in detail before.
Yeah, I think it, you gotta. At this point, from our side, we are looking at the property that we have and the road system that we have, what is currently there works for us. Um, and we've talked about putting a firelight out there, we're not sure if we're going to try and do that or not. Um, so anyway, I I do see if we close that down, there, there's people in our own organization that are against it. Um, you know, I truck uh when I pull down off the hill to get out of the highway, I cut in the back and go out that way because it's much easier to get out from that side than it is this side. But if you guys make that change, that that changes everything, so.
I think you, you pretty much shut it down every weekend or every other weekend.
Oh, come on, don't exaggerate that.
Because I go down there and those doors are up, I don't even set foot in there.
Um, but no, it it's kind of exciting, you know, I I think that's the the future we we have to to provide for our community. Um, any data, you know, we we have to get going on a strategic plan ourselves. Any data that we can get from all of us getting together like this, future growth and everything, that is data that we need for our strategic plan. We don't, we don't want to just throw darts at the wall to say, oh, this is what our growth is going to be. Yeah, sure. You know, it's numbers, they may happen, they may not happen, but it's better than trying to throw a dart at a wall and say, okay, what kind of growth we have in here in the next five years or ten years, so. Um, that's, that, that's, that's good information if we can get that. Um, so that's something that we've got to.
With you, I think all of us sitting at this table right now, I've learned more in a short amount of time.
Yep.
Than I do in every one of the city council meetings I've been to. So for me, this works. So I hope we do sit down and go over these details. It gives us a better idea on our end, your end.
Yeah.
School districts in. And with the school district going out for a bond and you guys coming up for this, I think more than ever, we really need to sit down on a more often basis.
I agree.
And go over this.
We're considering going out with a bond.
Okay, well, you know, I'm 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 hopeful.
You know, we, we have definitely flourished with the growth in this community and our budget also. And and we have to be smart with that, and I feel that we are absolutely being smart. And and we are being proactive and we. And and we are being proactive and we are looking at the future of where things are going. And and we do realize that. You know, we're at the end of our life expectancy with our current fire station. And so we need to. Do something different. And uh, we also don't want to build a big, huge twenty two thousand square foot Taj Mahal in town. I mean, we were. Tom and I were sitting there talking, we were looking around and like. The best way I can explain is when I first got married. We remodeled the house and then like. Six years later, money got better and we wanted to add on to that house. Well, we wanted to put certain things into this addition. And we looked back at the old part we did when we had nothing. It's like. Oh, we got to be real careful what we do over here because you'll walk through time into this, you know, new deal. And and that's the the architecture. We have to look at. What we have around us for architecture so that we don't get. You know, carried away with something that just doesn't belong. You know, we we have to figure out what fits in our town as far as architecture goes.
So.
John, you got anything to say?
No, I just confirm uh. Our fire district is growing as the city is. Uh, we've outdone our uh outgrown our. Building that we have now. It's coming up on sixty years old. It was new in nineteen sixty five. And incidentally, I started. Being active in Estacada in nineteen sixty five. But anyhow. Yeah, we've outgrown our station. And we do need to make a different station or new facilities. And like uh. Paul said there uh. We don't want to have a Taj Mahal. I remember we had plans there. For the last bond we went out for. And I personally was opposed to it. Because if we'd have built that station, it would overwhelm. Downtown Estacada. I mean, it was obvious. So. But uh, we're on the right track. We're going to build. Facility that fits the community. So.
So I I met with the architect that drew up that drawings down. He's out of Kues Bay and that station was built in Kues Bay. And so I spent some time there on there going through. A twenty two thousand square foot firehouse. Um. So in twelve, I remember right, the numbers were like. Five point one million to build that. Um, he's saying now you'd have to a little bit more than double that. So we're looking with that one. Eleven million, but there's changes we want to make to that one that. Brings the cost down, but we don't know. We have, we we've defined what our wants and needs are in a firehouse. And we've defined the footprint. So I've dealt with architects. You have to lock them in saying, this is the only square footage you have to work with, and this is what we want. Don't get outside the box drawing. And so that's, we're real close to going out for an RFP for an architecture firm to be able to do that for us. Um, so. Anyway, we'll we'll see where it goes, but in order to get. Chief going with grants, we have to have something that's pretty much shovel ready.
We got you. Um, that's. One last question for you. I know we everybody's been here a while, but uh how's morale? I mean, how is the. Uh, staffing uh volunteers? Are you doing okay?
Yeah, e- everything is is going really, really well. When you have an organization that big, you're going to find little hiccups here and there and whatnot and different personalities and whatnot. And and there's something I learned. I learned that most firefighters are type A people like myself. And it. I don't know how the chief can control that many type A people. Um, you know, that's something I just realized in the last six months. They're like, oh, okay, now I'm kind of understanding here, you know, so. You know, they're sitting around waiting for that next call. When the next call goes, the adrenaline button gets pushed and off and running, you know, so. Um, yeah, e- everything is going really, really well. Last weekend they had wildland interface training. They actually used Matt Day's property, had live fire. I've seen the pictures on Facebook of that. Um, we had uh ropes and rescue also at the same time. Yes.
Yeah, we did. Our tech rescue train was going on over here on the tower next to the station. So I think we had eight people in that. Uh, we had another eleven people doing the wildland firefighter training. But uh, yeah, our numbers are good. Um, a lot of agencies are struggling to get volunteers and maintain it and uh we're just about maxed out with it. So we're in a really good spot.
That's encouraging. All right. Any more questions for the fire?
Have you guys considered any other sites where you're building?
I was the one that was beating that drum hard. So. The corner of River Mill and two twenty four would be the northeast quarter, that lower section. I thought that would be an absolute awesome place to build. Um, that's before I met with Melanie and we talked about the UGB, this side of Hypal and realized in our lifetimes, that'll never happen. Because I seen the growth going that way, especially where the new sewage treatment plant that I. Seen the last proposal for, you know, obviously that's going to facilitate some growing. And. Yeah, um. In maybe my grandkids' lifetime, that there might be some houses put down there on Folsom and whatnot, but we can't build for that far out in the future. Um, so we we have, look, I was very concerned that we did not have the room over here. That's why we actually. That firehouse was going to be two hundred and six feet long by eighty feet. We took eighty feet off and turned the office and sleeping quarters ninety degrees to make it an L. That shortened it up. And then that's when Tom and I decided, hey, let's get some paint, some stakes out and let's lay this out and see what it looks like. And. I personally was really surprised as to what it looked like. I I I was convinced that we didn't have the room. Um, but we do have the room. And we also need to keep. A little bit of land left over. I mean, as. Community grows, we're getting close to kind of the end of our training station lifespan. We're going to have to do something about a different training space uh training station. I want to make sure that we don't lock ourselves in with just this footprint. You know, if we do a new training session, it'd be nice to have a little bit more area there that we can change things a little bit. Um, but yeah, we did do that. Um, Deputy Chief Smith um has uh been collecting data. On call runtimes. Just average calls and everything. That data says that location is the location. So. Sixty years, eighty years from now. Maybe not, but we're not going to throw a dart against the wall to say we're well against the map saying where we're going to put it. But it gets down to. Meeting the needs of the community. Making sure we control our operating costs at our new station so that it doesn't impede our budget so much that we can't. Do a substation somewhere else. I live in George. I wish we could take a Chinook helicopter and lift the George station up and place it somewhere else in our district that would better serve the district, but we can't do that. So. I mean, we get what fifteen calls a year up there?
Maybe.
Yeah, I mean, it it's. You know, a little history, before I moved up there, it was. The ladies in George that actually ran that station. They actually ran the trucks. They fought the fires, everything else. Um, so. Um, there's a few of them still up there. Um, but it's it's just. It would be nice if that was somewhere else that would better serve our district. And unfortunately, that's where it is. So. Anyway, um.
It sounds like a good plan.
Yep.
Is the lifeway going to still have access to that? That field that's over there? As far as.
They won't when we build our new firehouse. We're putting a helipad on top. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Um, no, it uh they they will not. Um, there's not that kind of room. So anyway.
So they'll be going back to going back to landing at the school.
School or veterans, they've used veterans before I've seen. So, um, yeah. Um. It's just. I wish there was more land.
Oh, I got you. I got you. Any more questions from the fire department?
I would like to make a comment again, uh, going back to those statistics of where the location of the main station. Should be, it's very interesting. In nineteen sixty five. They built that station because the statistics show. That that's where the main call volume was. And then over the years, we did other statistics and it always come back. That that's the best location for the main station. So. That it's interesting that consistently. Stays uh, those figures stay the same.
So you look at the outline communities, they have not grown that much. You look at Campanella, you look off Deuce, all that they have, but we're able to get there in the timeframe we're supposed to get there. So that's. Where it says it should be.
Good. So he has done a good job. I'm excited to see where we go with it. Um, is there anything from staff that they'd like to add?
That'll be you.
Yeah, so the Volunteer Association along with Estacada. Area Community Events, which used to put on the Timbertown Festival, uh, we partnered with the them and uh we are planning to bring fireworks back to Estacada on July fourth. Uh, it'll be. At the school out in the field there. Uh, we're in the midst of trying to raise money for it. So everybody feel free, break out your wallets, pocketbooks. Uh, we do have a pretty big bill that uh we have to pay for. Um, we're hoping to raise forty thousand dollars to get a good show. Um, we can do that show on ten thousand dollar increments. So if we only raise ten thousand dollars, that's as big a show as you're going to get. If we can get up to forty, then we get a really neat one. Um, so we'll see what happens, but um. Working with our volunteers and uh hoping to put that on and um have a local event.
We appreciate the fire department, the East group for trying to put that together. It's nice to see these little things coming back. Um, it's encouraging. So we appreciate that. Um, anything from you, Melanie, uh, with the city to add? No? Sadie, are you doing okay over there? We want to thank you. You've been great. You're keeping us all loud and proud. So thank you. And that said, I think we're done with the common. Wealth, so we will adjourn this meeting.